Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. My name is Tamara Heath and I'm the co-chair of the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce Board, and I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. This, I'd like to welcome you all to the Candidates Forum, which is moderated by the League of Women Voters. I would like to thank the candidates who have come this evening to answer your questions for the public. Running for office is no easy feat, and we appreciate your willingness to do this. Before we start, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the City of Brisbane, and MCTV for their assistance this evening. Recording of tonight's event will be available afterward on the city's YouTube channel and will be played on Channel 27. As a reminder, the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce is a non-political organization and does not support or endorse candidates. Rather, we seek to provide our members and the community with information they may need to make informed decisions. With that, I would like to introduce you to Margie Gator from the League of Women Voters, who will go over the protocol for the evening.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for coming. First, an announcement: please turn off or silence your cellphones so the candidates are not interrupted when they speak. To keep a neutral and nonpartisan atmosphere, the candidates agreed to our policy that no campaign literature, clothing, or other material associated with the campaign is permitted in this room. The forum, as Tamara said, is also being recorded and broadcast live to Channel 27 and the Brisbane Chamber YouTube channel, or maybe the city YouTube channel. The League, the sponsor, and the candidates have agreed to run or link to the recording from beginning to end with no editing in compliance with FCC rules. Unauthorized videos such as cellphone videos are not allowed because the FCC requires that a forum recording must be presented in its entirety. So as Tamara said, my name is Margie Gator, and I am a member of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. I want to thank the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this forum tonight. We appreciate their interest and efforts in presenting events that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and the issues. The League of Women Voters is a national, nonpartisan volunteer organization. We welcome people of all ages. Our education mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in government at every level. The League does not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Our sole interest is helping voters gain fair and unbiased information to make informed decisions on election day. The purpose of a candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the candidates to be heard at one time and to be questioned by you, the voters. Bringing the candidates and voters together face-to-face enables voters to be better informed about their election decision. So thanks for coming out to learn more about the candidates and asking them questions. Tonight, you will hear from the candidates for the Brisbane City Council. There are five candidates for three seats. The term of office is four years. Again, this event provides a nonpartisan setting for voters to hear all the candidates. It is not for the supporters or opponents of particular candidates, for the supporters or opponents of a particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate their own views and preferences. So keep your expressions of disdain and delight to yourselves for now, please. And we'll hold our applause until the end of the forum, when we thank all the candidates. The candidates, in alphabetical order, are Karen Cunningham, Chaya Bella David, Frank Kern, Cliff Lentz, and Colleen Mackin. The rules for the forum is follows: we will start with opening statements. Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Then we'll have the question period. During the question period, each candidate will have one minute to answer. All candidates will have equal time to speak, even if the question is addressed to only one candidate. We will end with closing statements, and each candidate will have two minutes for closing statements. Our timekeeper is Tina Doty. She will hold up signs, warning signs for the candidates when they have one minute, then 30 seconds left of the allotted time, and then at the end of the time, the timekeeper will hold up the stop sign until the candidate stops speaking. And again, candidates, you can finish your sentence, but not a paragraph, please. We have two ushers in the audience: Edith Jones and Nicole Nederer. Questions from the audience will be in writing, and they have cards for you to write down your questions. Raise your hand, and one of them will bring you a card and a pencil for you to write a question. Please write as legibly as you can, and a little bit big if you can, and try to keep the questions brief. Questions of a personal nature or invective will be out of order. So just, you know, flag them down if you need that. For those of you viewing this forecast on the broadcast, you can submit questions to the question alias. It should be on your screen: questions@lwvnsmc.org. All questions come to the moderator, and I will sort the questions by subject and ensure we cover a variety of topics. We seldom have time to ask all the questions, and I may need to rephrase or combine questions at time. So with all that, it's time for opening statements. The candidates have drawn lots to determine the order in which they will speak. Each candidate has three minutes for an opening statement, and our first candidate is Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Well, as you all know, you live here, we live in a truly special town, and it is an honor and privilege to serve on our city council. I'm asking you to grant me one last term. This will be my second full term on council if reelected, and I would really be honored if we could do that. And then, I really am retiring and looking for somebody to take this place. We all know that we have a very unique community that is secure, vibrant, and welcoming for everybody. We have worked very, very hard over the years to have a most inclusive city, and I think we've done an excellent job of doing that. There's not many, many places that I've ever been in the world where I have felt that the entire community we were living in welcomes everybody else. On my street alone, I think every continent except Antarctica is covered multiple times. And everybody on our street treats each other like family, and everybody on our street is most appreciative of the color and the vibrance that is brought into our street by all the different people who live there. My first priority when I became a city council member, when I applied to be a city council member seven years ago, was our safety. Our safety is still, to me today, the most important thing that we can ever do. That is, the safety from wildfires. Now, we've got the safety from sea level rise, which is going to be an absolute monumental thing for us to try and tackle, and safety from outside interference. And at this point, I am very disappointed in some of our elected officials in Sacramento who are trying to force things on us that we have very strongly voted no that we don't want. Some of the Senate bills coming through are abominable, and I have been fighting as hard as I can to protect us from those kind of things. I'm also a very fiscally prudent person, and when I say no about finances, it's not because I want to say no, it's because we shouldn't be spending money on things that are wasteful. We've wasted a lot of money in the last few years, and I am not somebody who likes to do that. Altogether, I serve you on 23 different boards, committees, commissions, subcommittees. So I hope you will find it in your hearts and in your mind to reelect me this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next opening statement is Cliff Lentz.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce and League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum. For the past 35 years, Brisbane has been my home. It's been a wonderful place to raise our family, to give back to our community, and to raise a small business. It's been an honor to serve on the Brisbane City Council for the past 15 years. And I feel grateful for the opportunity that I've had to lead on projects that have improved our community, such as finding funding to resurface the Crocker Park Trail, or collaborating with former councilmember Ray Miller to help write the sustainability framework for the Baylands, which is now in our general plan and will be the foundation for sustainable development in the Baylands. Partnering with councilmember Madison Davis to help create the Brisbane COVID Response Coalition, which helped our community cope with the pandemic. Working with Brisbane School District trustee Karen Lentz to help develop the after-school program for teens at Lament when we closed the teen center. And helping to write the response to the FAA initiative that drastically reduced airplane noise over Brisbane. I also designed and helped build the Pocket Park behind the community center. And one of the things that I feel really special about was, you know, being able to resurrect a dream that many councilmembers had previously, and that was to build a new library. And, you know, I was able to find some funding sources, and I put forth an alternative plan that stayed within our means. These things didn't happen because of me, they happened because of us. And, you know, it's about working together, finding solutions, and then taking the solutions and putting them into action. One of the most important tasks of a city councilmember is to make sure that the city's budget is sound and that we spend the taxpayers' money wisely. This means having conversations with the community. It means reaching out to you, understanding what services do you like, what services are important to you, and making sure that we improve upon them. Although we live in trying times, we also live in time of great opportunity. And this is what excites me about this job and motivates me to run for reelection. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And our next opening statement is Chaya Bella David.
Hello, my name is Chaya Bella David. Thank you. Hello, my name is Chaya Bella David. I am 18 years old. And I've had the privilege of growing up here all my life. I've had the opportunity to go to all the programs that we offer, Park and Rec, the Brisbane School District, and I've had the great opportunity to volunteer with many organizations here and really live the experience of what it means to be a Brisbaneian. I have taken this opportunity, after graduating high school from Jefferson, our district school, to, instead of go straight into college, to take the opportunity to do something that I've always loved, and that is give back to my community in any way that I can. I used to have a program for four and a half years called Books and Dolls for All, and that was a program in which was fiscally sponsored, and I collected books and dolls in my school, in my community, with local bookstores, and really got to work with my community to help others in need. And another opportunity that I've had is to join the Friends of the Brisbane Library and put on our many events, get the new library built, and really be able to advocate on what it is to live in Brisbane, what it is to grow up, and what it is to experience being a young person here, what it is to experience my parents here and my grandparents who visit here, and be able to understand where they're all coming from, and also my community members, which I've looked up to for so long. I've always been interested in politics and policy and civic engagement, and I just graduated high school, which I was part of lots of different programs, and one of those was something called JSA. And in JSA, I really learned the value of advocating for everyone and creating a space where everyone feels that they have the opportunity to express their opinions and their vision for the future. And so that's exactly what I plan to do here with my term, if elected, is to really get out in the community and be able to hear from everyone's experience and be able to really take that and be able to transform it into something really great. We are facing a lot of different big issues here and scary moments for everyone, where traditions may be threatened, our way of life, and I think this is a really great opportunity for us to all get, come together and make something great.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next opening statement is Frank Kern.
I would like, I would like to thank the Women's League of Voters, Brisbane Chamber of Commerce, and the City of Brisbane for hosting tonight's event. Good evening. My name is Frank Kern, and I'm running for city council. I moved to Brisbane in April of 2020 from an apartment in Mission, in the Mission Bay neighborhood of San Francisco with my partner of 10 years, Alan. As part of a well-negotiated strategy on my behalf, once we had a yard of our own, the agreement was that we could adopt a dog, which magically happened that autumn. Stella, the Latin word for star, is the name we gave her, so perfectly befitting the newest canine in Brisbane. Many don't know, but I grew up in the small town of Lake Zurich, Illinois, with a population just shy of 6,000 people. I attended public kindergarten through high school in a tight-knit community. It's no surprise I feel a bit of nostalgia when I walk down visitation, as it reminds me of our Main Street growing up, and I really love that. As with many kids, I grew up and explored. I'm a graduate of Roosevelt University, and I've had a rewarding 30-plus-year career in roles in marketing, operations, customer experience, and product management for companies such as Allstate, Sears, Kmart, and the Williams-Sonoma family of brands. The accomplishments and the learnings, we'll call them mistakes, have provided me with a wide range of professional experience in strategic planning, budgeting, forecasting, listening, and problem solving. Most recently, I've been serving Brisbane for nearly four years in an appointed seat on the Park and Rec Commission, providing guidance on programming, operation, and facilities. I love our current commission and how we blend art and science when seeking a solution. This is because we have two artists and one scientist on the commission. In a relatively short period of time, we've conducted a comprehensive community needs assessment survey, reviewed the master fee schedule, and made recommendations to city council on changes, started the primary research effort in exploring the creation of a not-for-profit Parks and Recreation Foundation, and executed a facilities benchmarking initiative with South San Francisco, Millbrae, and Burlingame. While on the commission, I've enjoyed impactful time with staff and other commissioners serving on subcommittees for Day in the Park, Festival of Lights, special events, and as one of our liaisons to our uber-talented Youth Advisory Committee. Prior to my experience in Brisbane, I was appointed to a special Chicago commission in 2014 by former White House Chief of Staff and then Mayor Rahm Emanuel for a new taxation district covering two neighborhoods. As the first commission of the service area, we conducted a needs assessment survey of the 77,000 residents and business owners. Over two consecutive terms, we had the pleasure of developing and executing programs addressing the survey results. Examples of these programs are litter abatement, snow removal, and public art installation. With that said, I'm excited to be a candidate, and if elected, I look forward to gathering and applying resident input to guide upcoming projects, big and small, expanding programs, outreach, and funding sources for the Park and Rec Commission, and maintaining a key eye on financial responsibility while protecting our precious environment by keeping Brisbane clean and green. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final opening statement- And our final opening statement is Colleen Mackin.
Thank you. It's been an extreme privilege to serve you in my first term on the council. Your vote showed the faith you put in to use my experience on the Planning Commission, Complete Streets, Sitcom, and the county civil grand jury. All this experience has helped me serve Brisbane in local, regional, and state matters. During my tenure, my focus has always been on you. Your safety and security are always on my mind. Many of you have contacted me with concerns ranging from crime, traffic, pedestrian and wildfire safety, insurance rates, open space, climate change, and sea level rise. We've worked on some of those issues together. Like the Town Hall workshop I organized to discuss escalating homeowners' insurance. And some of you attended the meeting I held on pedestrian safety and distracted drivers. I advocated for flock cameras to assist our police department, and the cameras have been a real success, reducing crime for less than the cost of an officer. Sea level rise is already evident at our marina, so I put the brakes on a park out there. We're studying possible impacts on the roads and property. While other peninsula cities are planning levees, I've had to remind them that Little Brisbane's part of the county as well. How we revere our open space here. I am emphatic about protecting our city-owned parcels on the mountain. We also must investigate whether other acres' parcels should be deemed safe for development. Tonight, I'm proud to announce being named a climate champion. This was named by 350 Silicon Valley Action, a local nonprofit promoting climate change goals. This endorsement recognized my representation of Brisbane on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board and as a civic leader supporting climate-positive policies. And by the way, PCE funding has brought us solar on Mission Blue, the library, electrification for heating the pool, fleet management, and numerous EV chargers. Looking forward, there are at least two major development projects in the near term, including the Baylands. After studying Baylands' environmental impacts for over a year, I feel prepared. Finances are a concern because we've delayed important projects due to lack of funds. We need new sources of revenues. A deep dive into the budget is necessary, combined with long-term planning. We need to resist impulse spending so we don't saddle future generations with debt. I hope this provided you with insights into my work on the council, and I look forward to your questions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's time for the candidates to answer your questions, and I got lots of good questions from you all ahead of time and here and online. It's excellent. That's why I love coming to Brisbane. If you have not written your question, raise your hand so the ushers can pick it up. And again, if you're online, it's questions@lwvncsmc.org. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question, and I will vary the order on which the candidates are called to speak. The first question is, what is the job description for a Brisbane city council member, and what qualities do you believe make a good public servant? What is the job description for a Brisbane city council member, and what qualities do you believe make for a good public servant? And our first answer will be Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. What qualities does a city council member say? One more time, please.
What qualities do you believe make a good public servant, along with the job description of a city council?
Okay, so a good public servant is not a politician. In this town, it is very important that we work as a team. There is no space on the city council for anybody to go rogue and make decisions on their own. If the council votes in favor of doing things a certain way, that is when, that is what exactly we must do. So what makes a really good person on this council is someone who is a team player and not there for their own ego or for their own agendas, and someone who can work together across the lines even when we disagree.
Thank you. And next is Frank Kern.
Tough question. I think that the quality is that it will take to be a Brisbane council member are definitely leadership, a strong, real strong ability to listen and to translate the community's needs into action. And in the process of doing that, being inclusive of the entire community and seeking out feedback, and of course, working together with the other council members. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chaiabella David.
For me, what I think makes a really great city council member is the ability to have an open mind. I think a lot of times that people, I've been told that the decision to run comes from within. And although I agree with that to an extent, I think it's really important to keep an open mind and be sure that you're advocating for everyone's needs. You may not agree with everyone's needs, but it's important that you do because by taking this job, it's your responsibility to take care of everyone and make sure everyone's voices and opinions are being heard and are being uplifted. And so that, along with being a collaborative team worker, I think it takes a lot of teamwork to get things done, and so keeping an open mind and being able to always give an open hand and open heart to one another and be collaborative, I think, is what is needed.
Thank you. And next is Colleen Mackin.
Thank you. First of all, be prepared for a 40-hour work week if you want to do a good job. Selflessness, going the extra mile and doing research, being a good listener, building bridges in the county, having opinions but parking them at the door, and finally, building consensus. It's not about you. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Cliff Lenz.
I believe the role that we have on the diocese here is being a public servant, and we serve at the pleasure of the public, not the other way around. And the best way to do that is to be a really good listener and to embrace the concerns and the ideas and the thoughts that you all have, and then putting those ideas and thoughts into action. Of course, when you're on the diocese with five people, you have to work together, and the only way that you do that is respecting one another. You also have to come to the meetings very prepared and be willing to listen to the public when they come to the podium, because maybe you might have to change your opinion on something because you've gotten in new information. So you have to be well-rounded. Again, if you're putting in your own opinion and that's, you know, where you are with the tunnel vision, you're not going to be successful in serving the public.
Thank you. Our next question is budget and finance. Given limited budget resources, how do you or would you prioritize city spending? Given limited budget resources, how do you or would you prioritize city spending? And first on this is Colleen Mackin.
Thank you. Budget and finance is a topic that I love because I have visions of a lot of overhaul we need and examining our current budget and what we're spending money on. I think we've gone very long in being a very generous community and providing lots of services, but we're not getting the revenues to support that anymore. So we've got some hard decisions, and we need more revenues. So I would start with first examining what we have and how we're spending it, and then looking for the revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Chaiabella David.
I think there's a lot of opportunities to examine our expenditures and what we're taking in. I think we are on a limited budget. We are spending more than we're taking in, and I think it's important to really look at that and be able to identify areas that we can get better in. There's always a place where we could move spending to better serve the community's needs or better serve our future plans, and so I think it's really important to really look into that and also to talk with the finance department. I think they're a great resource, and I think that frequently collaborating with them is how we get on top of these things and how we find enough money to do the things that we need and have a little bit extra to do the things that we may want in the future.
Thank you. And next is Cliff Lenz.
The budget is probably the most important thing that a city council member has to decide on, because the things that are in the budget are the programs and services that we all depend upon, whether it's for our health, our safety, or the joy of living in Brisbane. Of course, we're not an open bank, and we have to be prudent about the way that we spend the taxpayers' money. But luckily for Brisbane, our finances are very, very solid. Over the last nine out of 10 years, our revenues have outpaced what our expenses have been. Initially, we start out where we're showing a deficit in the projection. Most times, nine out of 10, we come out on top, and that's because we have a priority-based budget, and so we spend money on the things that are important to the community. So I am not concerned about limited budget.
Thank you.
We have the revenue.
Thank you. And next is Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. I would put myself in the fiscally prudent bucket here, and I have a very critical eye towards the outcomes and benefits of every dollar we spend. I have seen over many years us waste money that is abhorrent to me. $85,000 on a consultant out at Sierra Point, I think, was a horrible waste of our money. We spent $50,000 on a school study that was cut and pasted from, I don't know where, but was not very good, and it is still up on our website for anybody to take a look at. So from that perspective, not happy with how we have spent money in the past, what we really need to be doing is looking at the businesses we're bringing into Brisbane. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of businesses that have a lot of sales tax. I would love for us to look at how to make that a priority moving forward so we will have more money to spend in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Frank Kern.
I think it's obvious as a city council member that you are the guardian of the budget, and you have to monitor any spending that's going on, line item by line item. I know recently we went through an exercise on Park and Recreation where we looked at the master fee schedule, and that's no small fee. That's a six-page document, it's 12-point font, and you're looking at every single fee. And speaking with our finance department, they're like, always have a keen eye on possible potential revenue streams. And so when we were going through and we were doing our evaluation on that, we tried to keep prices as reasonable as possible for our residents in Brisbane, and we did a great job at that. We're still the most affordable programs in the bay, or I'm sorry, on the peninsula. But at the same time, we wanted to increase the revenue stream, so for outside residents, we increased fees pretty significantly, just to try and increase our revenue stream. So those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Our next question, also somewhat finance and land use related. The city spent over $4 million to purchase the Bank of America building two years ago. It sits empty and unused. What do you envision for the site and why? The city spent over $4 million to purchase the Bank of America building two years ago. It sits empty and unused. What do you envision for the site and why? And first is Chaiabella David.
This area is always talked about, whether it's on Facebook or in groups, and I think it's really important that whatever the space gets transformed into is a place where everyone can enjoy, a place that is sustainable, and also a place that everyone feels welcomed in. I personally think that it should be a place for community. I understand the need for some to want it to become some type of private entity, like a business, but I feel like growing up here, we really do need more community spaces so that people can gather and have more events and things like of that nature. And so I think there's more of a need for spaces that bring the people together, and so that's what I would plan for that space.
Thank you. Next is Cliff Lenz.
Purchasing the Bank of America property is a mixed bag for me. I did support purchasing the property because now the city owns all four corners at the entrance of our town, which I think is awesome, and we've hired a consultant to work with the community, to gather your input and come up with a vision for the site. What I have issue with, though, is how we funded the purchase. You know, originally, we were looking at a mixed-use site with affordable housing and retail, and we could have used the Affordable Housing Fund and spent or bought that property with cash. Instead, the council chose to take out a loan with Bank of the West, and since that time, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in bank fees and interest. We have a loan that we need to pay, and hopefully, through the process of communicating with the public, we can put forth a project and stop the bleeding of that loan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. One of the first things that came to mind about the Bank of America was we didn't want a gas station sitting there. We didn't want In-N-Out Burger sitting there. So the purchase of that property, first and foremost, in my mind, was so we could protect that corner of the entrance to Brisbane and make it what we want it to be. I can't really talk to you about what I know is going on there right now because there are people interested in various things, and they have to go through a process, and we can't talk about a process that is in process in public at this meeting. But I can say that we are not looking at the Bank of America building as a loan item. The whole area could possibly be redeveloped into something and that we can't talk about tonight.
Thank you. And next is Frank Kern.
So I understand why Brisbane City Council purchased the Bank of America building. I think it was the right choice at the time. At the same time, I feel like I want it turned back over to private hands and sold so we can recoup that money. It's my understanding that there is a consultant that has been retained to help ideate on what that property might be used for. I think the public engagement process is supposed to begin sometime this autumn, and I really want to hear what people want to see in that space, and that's what I want to support, is what people think needs to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Colleen Mackin.
Thank you. I think it was a wise, long-term investment. I know some people will say, oh, we're losing money, we're losing money. You never lose money on real estate investments in California. Obviously, there was a lot in mind with the council when this was discussed, and the primary one, you've heard a couple reasons already. Do you really want a gas station there? Do you want the entrance to town to just be whatever someone else envisions, or isn't it critically important to us? That's what we see when we come home every single day. So in my opinion, I think we need to revisit the Bank of America as an extension of the Parkside Plan to create a more vibrant retail sector. And in terms of affordable housing, there were other locations for that in Parkside, but I really want to hear what the community envisions, and I think we need to put all of those ideas together before we start making assumptions. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of different questions on Baylands. The first one is, were you in favor or against Proposition JJ, which in 2018 aimed to permit housing development on the Baylands property? And as a council member, would you help move this critical, what would you do to help move this critical, this project forward to completion or stop it if you're against it? So were you in favor or against Proposition JJ in 2018? The proposition aimed to permit housing development on the Baylands. And as a council member, what would you do to move this project forward to completion or stop it? And we start with Cliff Lenz.
All right. So back in 2018, the council unanimously endorsed Measure JJ because we were under tremendous pressure from the state to put housing on the Baylands. And the concern was that if we did not- And the concern was that if we did not take matters into our own hands, the state was going to do that and that would have been awful. The developer had proposed significantly more housing in their original plan. We came up with a compromise that we worked out with Senator Jerry Hill at the time to reduce the amount of housing from 1,800 to 2,200, which we know is going to double the size of Brisbane. And that's a lot, but we knew that if we put that out there, that we could get the state off our back and that then we could plan for the site the way that we want to do it. We want to make sure that the site is remediated properly, want to make sure that public transportation is at its best, and we want to make sure that we have a neighborhood out in the baylands that is a reflection of us.
Next is Colleen Mackin.
Thank you. Whether anyone's in favor or not, it's here, we're living with it. The developer is still in a lawsuit with high-speed rail, so nothing is going to move forward until that's resolved. But additionally, there was a contingency that the developer had to find a water source. So until we are actually notified that they have a certifiable water source available, we'll just have to wait and see.
Thank you. Next is Frank Kern.
I have to agree with the prior two sentiments. I think that we are stuck with the baylands project. I did take a look at the initial plan. There was plenty of open space, which made me pretty excited, but I understand that we've got some very specific requirements that need to happen in terms of the remediation that's there, as Colleen said, identifying the water supply. And that this is net positive revenue-wise for Brisbane going forward. And I think we discussed earlier that we need to take into account sea level rise in every aspect of the development of the baylands.
Thank you. Next is Chia Bella David.
I agree with a lot of the sentiments shared already as well. We are here, there are changes coming and I think that's why it's more critical than ever to move forward with everyone's perspective. I remember being a little bit scared that someone is going to live there and have to deal with all that waste and that was really scary for me. But also I had the experience of growing up and playing soccer here and going through tournaments and being able to experience spaces that were similar but got transformed into soccer fields for, and other areas for open space. So whether you like it or whether you don't, I think we have a lot of opportunities here to make it what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. Measure JJ was unanimously approved by the entire City Council for all the reasons that you've heard. I'll reiterate what came from my council members. We didn't have a choice. We were forced into a situation, we made the best of that situation, and Measure JJ says that no housing can be built on the baylands unless it is ground-level safe. And that is where we were. We got into a tussle with high-speed rail shortly after agreeing to do Measure JJ and I'll talk a little bit more about that later in my closing statements, but we have just settled our lawsuit with high-speed rail. High-speed rail is still in a lawsuit with the developer, so nothing goes anywhere until those things get settled. So like it or not, this is where we're at. We don't have any water and all of the City Council members that sit right now are very concerned about the entire project. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is about housing. With housing in Brisbane becoming increasingly unaffordable, what actions have you taken or will you take to lower housing costs for both buyers and renters now and for future generations? With housing in Brisbane becoming increasingly unaffordable, what actions have you taken or will you take to lower housing costs for both buyers and renters now and for future generations? And first is Frank Kern.
Hi. It's my understanding that the city of Brisbane does not own or operate what we would classify as affordable housing right now. It's also my understanding that if you were looking for affordable housing or rent control, you would reach out to San Mateo County for that assistance. And we do, I believe, offer Section 8 housing and so that's something that, that could be considered as well. At one point in time, I know that Brisbane, and I don't think the program exists any longer, but I know that Brisbane had a first-time homeowners program where they offered, I believe it was up to $200,000 in loan assistance for the purchase of a home here. I think that program has been discontinued, but I really like the sound of it and I think that's something that we could attract, you know, first-time homebuyers to Brisbane with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. For affordable housing builders to be interested in building anything in Brisbane, they're not interested in building four units at a time. They're interested in building multiple units, 20, 40, 60, 80. And we don't have any properties that are, fit that bill right now. Also from the state, and I suggest you look very carefully at who you're sending to the state, both in the Assembly and in the Senate, are writing these bills. The SB 9, for example, is going to make the property values in Brisbane go up and make them less affordable for everybody. So we're heading in the wrong direction, even though our senators and our assemblies say they're looking at affordable housing. I don't believe it. So we are saying no at San Mateo County level, CCG, I sit on that board. We say no. We're one county out of 58 and we kept getting rolled over and they say we want affordable housing, but they're working in the opposite direction.
Thank you. And next is Colleen Mackin.
Yes, we are not developers. We only zone for the housing. And I'd really like to see our legislators in Sacramento put together some incentives for developers to subsidize building some senior housing so seniors can stay in our community. And there's plenty of young people who grow up in Brisbane and want to stay here and there's nowhere they can rent or buy. There's, there's just nothing. We seem to be in this housing frenzy and it's all focused on market-rate housing because as you've heard, developers cannot make money building anything but market-rate housing. So we need to come to grips with this in Sacramento first.
Thank you. Next is Cliff Lenz.
All right. You know, the last couple of weeks, I've been knocking on a lot of doors and having conversations with people. And affordable housing is one of the, the top items of concern for residents. We have a lot of seniors who are having a hard time staying in Brisbane. If you look at our senior housing across the street, we have a, a long list of folks trying to get in. We have families that are having to leave Brisbane because the high cost of housing is, is too much for them. I serve on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee with Madison Davis and our work together, we worked with a consultant to put forth an affordable housing strategic plan, which was recently passed by the City Council. One of the things that we can do, and I, I hope that my council colleagues, you know, get on, on this as soon as possible, and that, and that's impact fees. We have these developers who are creating all these jobs and we are not getting the revenue that we need like other cities are doing.
Thank you. And finally Chia Bella David.
I think this is a really tricky question. I think, I think this is something that frankly, a lot of this country is experiencing, especially California and particularly where we are in the Bay Area. So there is a lot of really high costs to living here. Growing up with a single mom, I know all too well about that and I think it's really unfortunate. I know my, my own grandma lives on the very top floor of an apartment because that's the only thing she can afford. She doesn't have the mobility to get up there. And so as much as I think this is a really important question, I'm actually not the most qualified to come up with a plan for that. I think my job as a City Council candidate and possibly member is to talk to people that do this. It's to talk to the experts that are in the running and doing experiments and running tests.
Thank you. Thank you. Are related to housing, how can we take steps to protect our residential inventory and control or regulate purchases by investors for the purpose of short-term rentals? How can we take steps to protect our residential, Brisbane's residential inventory and control or regulate purchases by investors for the purpose of short-term rentals? And we start with Karen Cunningham.
I'm not sure that short-term rentals are just the problem here. There are many, many homes that are being purchased with full cash in our city and many other places, obviously, but we know that people are coming in with cash offers and, you know, the young first-time homebuyer can't compete with that. And in many cases, I know there is one street in our city where one person owns six homes that are vacant. So these investors that are coming in with cash offers and then doing nothing with them is part of the problem. Short-term rentals is a small part of our problem and until there are state laws or we decide in our city that we're going to crack down on these things, they will continue.
Thank you. Next is Frank Kern.
Yeah, I will tell you firsthand as a relatively new homeowner in California here that there are a lot of folks out there that just show up with a house with a briefcase full of cash and the deal is done. So I know that there are investors and that there are people investing in various areas of Brisbane and there are vacant homes and I think it's something that we're going to have to take a hard look at going forward. I have had some conversations as of late regarding short-term rentals as regarding, as they pertain to Airbnb kind of situations. And I know that we have put some regulations on the books trying to prevent those. And if someone wants to do something along those lines, they need to apply for a license and I think we need to look at more, more ideas along that front. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chia Bella David.
I think at this point, it's not really a city council's jurisdiction to do that. I think people that purchase property do have the right to do what rentals they like, whether that's long-term or short-term. I myself come from a family that is in a rental. I have had the opportunity to go and learn from relatives and see what it's like and not every story is the same. I know that not every situation is an all-cash buyer or not every situation is someone that, a greedy landlord that wants to just squeeze someone out of their money. And so I feel like this is really up to higher powers and I think this is not really something that is just one way.
Thank you. Next is Colleen Mackin.
Thank you. One of my favorite topics, I've researched this a lot and a lot of states are grappling with the same problem. Increasingly, to get around local ordinances like ours, there are a lot of property owners listing 30-day-plus rentals and trying to enforce, to make sure that they're not renting for less than that, it's really tough. So with interest, I found four states that have enacted laws that include 30 to 90 days or 30 to 120 days as short-term rentals. And I've spoken to State Senator Josh Becker about this. I think we need some tighter legislation to control it.
Thank you. And finally Cliff Lenz.
All right. You know, we know that short-term rentals have taken stock out of the rental housing market and it's really unfortunate. There is a huge demand. I'm sure many of you in this room use Airbnb. We have a short-term rental ordinance and the reason that we implemented it, so that we could bring things to the surface and not have it be in the shadows, it also provides some revenue for us. But as a whole, you know, many of these, these owners, they're not abiding by the rules and so we need to do, we need to have more teeth in our ordinance so that we discourage these players that are taking advantage of our housing stock in our community.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to combine a couple of questions that aren't entirely related, but I think you can handle them both in a minute. The first is, where do you stand on coyotes? And the second is, the public landscaping all over town looks awful in this questioner's opinion. What could be done to make our streets and parks more beautiful? So first, the coyotes? And second, public landscaping and parks? How would you spruce that up or make it look better in town? And we start with Colleen Mackin.
The coyotes are, are indeed a concern. Some people don't like the raccoons or the skunks or the possums or the birds doing business on their cars, but they are here and they're more so in Brisbane because somebody's been feeding them. So I think it's really important not to blame the coyotes, but to increasingly be vigilant about leaving food out or any of the things that are attracting them. As far as the public landscaping, we have been in drought cycles, so we've reduced watering a lot of public spaces and I think a lot of even homeowners have done the same. As far as making parks look more beautiful, at one time, we encouraged what's called zero-scape and changing the plant mix. And that also will be a benefit in terms of fire hardening. So I think it's a, it's a project we can put forward in the next cycle and try to get people educated about what the possibilities are.
Thank you. And next is Chia Bella David.
Coyotes. Personally, I think they're pretty cool. I was also part of the group that got their speaker stolen by a coyote and that was definitely an interesting experience. He was really playful. It was scary. But I think they are here to stay. I think they're one of the most adaptable creatures here and I think it's important that we learn to coexist with them. I think Brisbane's really unique in the sense that we're not super industrialized and we have this beautiful mountain and growing up with San Bruno Mountain Watch and being able to really foster the native plants there goes right in hand with beautification. I really do think that there's a lot of opportunities that we can do to beautify and with native plants.
Thank you. Next is Cliff Lenz.
I do think coyotes are pretty cool. You know, but I also know that people are concerned about them as well. A couple nights ago, we almost had our dog eaten as a midnight snack by a coyote. But you know, the best way to, to handle it is to continue with communication. The city recently held a little workshop that was well-attended. It's on our website, so people can go to it. As Chia said, we have to coexist with the, the native animals of our area. In regards to landscaping, we have been dealing with drought over the last several years and so we need to transition to more drought-tolerant plants, but we also need to cut our weeds down a lot sooner so that people can walk on our sidewalks and the area looks better until it's too, too late in the season, which looks crummy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karen Cunningham.
I too love coyotes and I will put a plea out to all the people in Brisbane, please stop feeding the coyotes. Whoever is leaving chicken and duck feet and all kinds of other food, it is a federal law, I believe, that says you can't do that, so please stop. And the coyotes might go back up the hill and not bother you so much. We live on a mountain, folks. We've got animals. I mean, really. Relative to the landscaping in town, agreed. We have a beautification subcommittee that, there's two of us in this room, sit on that committee and we've had our hands tied because high-speed rail had a lawsuit with Brisbane and they had threatened to take out the entire front of our town. That's part of the lawsuit we've been working on. It is resolved. Randy Barrow is back from vacation and the beautification subcommittee will have a meeting very soon to make some nice decisions.
Thank you. And finally Frank Kern.
I agree with every, what everybody said here. The coyotes are here to stay, they're part of our natural environment. I've done some deep dive digging. I've done some deep dive digging on this. And, you know, if you want to kill a coyote, the first thing you do is you feed it. As soon as a coyote is accustomed to human handouts and they become comfortable around people, that's when they need to be exterminated. So if we stop feeding the coyotes, they will retreat. And again, there's two kinds of feeding. There's one where you're literally putting food out. And then the other one is you're not really securing your garbage. And both are tremendous issues in Brisbane right now. So with that being said, I think awful is a pretty strong word to talk about the landscaping. Now, I do understand that we had the mudslides and we had a lot of work that had to be done in our sewer systems here to make sure that the drainage was great. As such, maintenance has been deferred. And so I think, you know, to Karen's point, that I think we're going to get things back on track here shortly and we'll be focused on that.
Thank you. Our next question is about Quarry Road. There is a 1.4 million-square-foot freight forwarding facility proposed for development of the quarry. It would entail reconfiguring Quarry Road, potentially harm an endangered species habitat, and create truck traffic 24/7. What is your impression of the proposed project and do you think it would be good for Brisbane? There is a 1.4 million-square-foot freight forwarding facility proposed for development of the quarry. It would entail reconfiguring Quarry Road, potentially harm an endangered species habitat, and create truck traffic 24/7. What is your impression of the proposed project and do you think it would be good for Brisbane? And we start with Cliff Lenz.
All right. You know, the quarry development is complicated. You know, 17 years ago, the people of Brisbane went to the ballot box and voted against the housing project. Now we have a potentially new owner who wants to put in a commercial development at the site. Unfortunately, we have not had a robust public discussion about the quarry. We just have not talked about it. And we need to do that. And we need to include the folks on the ridge. We should have meetings on the ridge because, you know, quite frankly, folks in central Brisbane, that's kind of out of sight, out of mind. If you live on the ridge, you're going to be looking on that all the time. And so we need to have a more robust public process. And then we can make the best decision moving forward.
Thank you. Next is Colleen Mackin.
First thing that comes to mind is habitat. Habitat is always a big priority in Brisbane. How can we ignore the quarry in that regard? But the developer has a right to put a project on the table. I can see inherent problems, light spill, noise, pollution. And of course, the ridge already suffers from some problems emanating from the industrial park. Will it benefit Brisbane? How do we know yet? We haven't really seen the details of the project. And so I'm not really qualified to say. But I think ultimately, that's going to depend on all of you. What is your tolerance level? What do you envision for that? And again, I'm going to park my opinion at the door until I see what they present to us and how you feel about it. It's really up to you.
Thank you. And next is Frank Kern.
Interesting topic. So Monday of this week, I had never been to the quarry. I'd seen it from Mission Blue. It doesn't look that big when you're looking out over the valley at it. I drove up to the quarry on Monday in my Kia. And I just asked if I could take a self-guided driving tour of the quarry. And they said, please don't get hit by any equipment and have fun with that. So I drove the entire quarry and I took a hard look at it. And the quarry is a massive, massive piece of land. And depending on where you're at at the quarry, not necessarily the entrance, but when you're back in the quarry, boy, I took a bunch of pictures. And yeah, you can see the entire ridge. And so I think that a public hearing is the right next step on this for sure. And that we definitely need to give people to, we need to give people the opportunity to voice their opinions and concerns about this because it will affect the ridge.
Thank you. Next is Chia Bella David.
Frankly, I think it's too premature to say for me and I guess for this council as well. I think there's a lot of things that we need to take into consideration. And that especially goes for environmental impact and public opinion. We do have quite a few endangered native species and it's not right for us to totally neglect that part. And also, it's not okay for us to just go ahead and make these decisions without the ridge's input and without the input of the whole town. And so I think it's too premature to say, but I'm excited to learn more about it and share my findings with you. And yeah.
Thank you. And finally, Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. So with any project or with any property, the property owner is entitled to ask for anything they want. Whether it is granted or not is a completely different story. So at this point, the developer has asked for what they want. Then the process starts. And we haven't even had an environmental impact report back to the city. It has not come before the city council in any way, shape, or form. And that is not the process. The process is, it goes before the planning commission and at some point, it will land on the tables or the desks of the city council. And at that point, you are all involved and your opinions about everything are paramount to any project, regardless of the quarry or whatever. And for us, because it hasn't landed on our desk, we can't really give you an opinion. Because if I give you my opinion on that project right now and I say one thing over the other, I may not be able to vote on it in the future.
Thank you. Gosh, I have so many good questions, but I'm going to, and it's, we're running out of time, so I'm going to squeeze in two more. The first is about climate change. The City of Brisbane declared a climate emergency in 2021, establishing ambitious greenhouse gas reduction targets of 66% reductions by 2030 and carbon neutrality by 2040. These dates are swiftly approaching. Excuse me. If elected, what concrete actions will you take as a member of council to ensure we meet these goals? So climate change. The City of Brisbane declared a climate emergency in 2021, establishing ambitious greenhouse gas reductions by 66% by 2030 and carbon neutrality by 2040. Those dates are coming. If elected, what concrete actions will you take as a member of council to ensure Brisbane meets these goals? And we start with Frank Kern.
I think the first thing that I would do is I would partner with my fellow council members to understand the commitment that was made and also understand the work that's underway. At this point, I'm quite certain the stakeholders and the beneficiaries have been identified. But I would want to better understand the process of where we're at in meeting these goals and then take the necessary next steps from there.
Thank you. Next is Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. So we are very aggressive in our climate goals at every level. Our Open Space and Ecology Committee works very hard on all of the issues. They take the lead. Our staff on this issue are also very aggressive with some of the new laws that we've put in place. So we just keep being ahead of the curve on everything that we possibly can. So whatever comes up and gets put on our desk, we are voting in favor of the highest standards that we can possibly put forward moving forward.
Thank you. Next is Colleen Mackin.
Well, this is kind of an easy one for me because I represent Brisbane on the Peninsula Clean Energy Board, which for those of you that aren't familiar, it's our nonprofit community clean energy provider, also known as your electrical provider. And in that capacity, I have a unique opportunity. We are constantly developing new programs on bill pay, rebates. Newest are a lot of the government programs, which in the opening statement, I mentioned how Brisbane was able to take advantage of those. We've got solar on Mission Blue. We're going to have solar on the library. PCE has helped with electrification to heat the water in our pool. A lot of those EV chargers you see, those are financed by Peninsula Clean Energy. And there are enormous plans that we've been working on just in the past six months. So it gives us a way to actually have funding to do the things that need to be done.
Thank you. Next is Cliff Lenz.
All right. Climate change is the number-one threat to humanity, right? Bottom line. And every city, every person has a responsibility. And so we, as a community, you know, we need to look at, okay, where are the impacts? Where are the greenhouse gases coming from? Come from transportation, coming from construction? You know, they're coming from the land uses that we allow as a council to move forward with. So the biggest impact for us, where we can make a difference, is in the valance. And luckily, through the passage of Measure JJ, the sustainability framework is now in our general plan. And because it's in our general plan, the developer's specific plan has to be consistent with our general plan. So when they're putting forth their project, they need to abide by our sustainability framework, which deals with energy, deals with transportation, deals with construction.
Thank you. And finally, Chia Bella David.
This is one of the biggest issues. This also is one of the biggest issues that faces my generation. I think the key to moving through this is collaboration and energy. It's going to take a whole lot of energy to really go out there and find all the creative solutions that we can do to personally tackle this issue locally and also individually. I think there's a lot of programs that we can be around and learn about and implement into our city and little choices that we can do. I think being on city council is a great stage to prepare for this and make sure that we're taking the right steps to make sure that we'll be okay, whatever okay means. And so I'm really excited to have this opportunity and I hope that we can create a really good plan.
Thank you. The final question is, you each have some unique skills and strengths that you would bring to the table to help you serve the residents of Brisbane. What are they? In other words, you know, what are your superpowers? You each have unique skills and strengths that you would bring to the table to serve the residents of Brisbane? What are they? What's your superpower? And we start with Karen Cunningham. Oh, boy.
My mouth. I would call myself one of the lead negotiators in this town. I don't take no for an answer from anybody who comes in wanting to bully us. In fact, I led the charge forcing High-Speed Rail to address our concerns. I watched for years as they came in here with their mid-level management bullying Brisbane, telling us what they were going to do to our city. And I stood up and said, no, get out. Bring me your decision-makers. The next week, we had the CEO at the table and now we've settled our lawsuit. So I would call myself the negotiator with wings.
Thank you. Next is Frank Kern.
Okay, superpowers. I'm an activist. And from 2007 to 2011, I worked for an agency called Between Friends. And they were dedicated to breaking the cycle of domestic violence. I worked hard for them in putting together a program we called Reach, where we went into high schools and we taught teens about healthy dating relationships and when they were about to be in trouble and how to get out of that situation. So I think activism is big for me. I know about perseverance. I'm a two-time AIDS rider. I did the Canadian AIDS ride from Montreal down Vermont, across New Hampshire and up the coast of Maine. I will tell you, when you do something like that, both in training and execution, you take it one bite at a time. And last but not least, avid softball player from Chicago, second baseman, not very good, can stop the ball with any part of my body, including the mitt. And so I know a little bit about playing on a team and when a team is functioning well and how to make that work. Thank you.
Ah, then it wasn't 16-inch softball in Chicago. Next is Chia Bella David.
I think that, superpower, that's an interesting question. I think my superpower lies in really being able to listen to people and understand to the best of my ability and put myself in their shoes to understand what is that's most important to them. And I think that in this position, it's important to balance your expertise and what you think and being able to fully put yourself in someone else's shoes, whether you agree with them or not, and be able to say, I understand what you're doing. I understand why you think the way that you do. And I see you and I'm passionate about getting you to where you need to be to be successful too. And I have a lot of diverse experiences, coming from multicultural background and multi-generational working with people. And I'm excited for the challenge.
Thank you. Next is Colleen Mackin.
Well, by virtue of all those self-tests, I am the analyst of the group. Most of you probably know that, but it's going to blow my closing statement. My motto in life I learned in my early twenties, which was never assume anything. Once you fall on your face enough times, you learn that all your preconceived notions, you better take them off the table. I have a natural curiosity about everything, which kind of makes sense in my journalism career because I love probing into things. I like looking at all the possibilities. And I also had part of my career as an operations manager handling all kinds of complexities at the same time. Manufacturing, importing, scheduling, airline shipments, UL approval, credits, warehouses, you name it. So I can deal with a lot of complex ideas at the same time. I am very process-oriented. So I like to be very methodical and I love to read staff reports and find out what's not being said.
Thank you. And finally, Cliff Lenz.
All right. I think people who know me, serving on the city council, know that I work hard. And in order to get things done, you have to collaborate. And in order to collaborate, you have to listen, you have to be approachable, and you, you know, you want to, you know, put forward the things that are for the greater good. Sometimes, when you're out in the community, people can be very opinionated. And you have to be able to take that in and not take it personally. You just have to understand that it's a different perspective and that's all right. And every voice is included. Every voice needs to be heard and brought to the table so that the best decisions can be made. And so I feel that, I guess if I have a superpower, it's wanting to work with all of you.
Thank you.
Sincerely.
Thank you. And thank you, Brisbane, for all the great questions. I wish I could have asked all or more of them because they were excellent. But now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. We will reverse the order from that of the opening statements. So our first candidate is Colleen Mackin.
Thank you. Many of you have told me that I'm the voice of reason and accountability. You see that I do the deep research and I arrive well-prepared for council meetings. You said you appreciate my thoughtful insights and comments on important issues. And you see that I'm never afraid to ask the hard questions. Those who've worked with me, they admire how I approach matters. I look beyond what's on the surface. I think of both history and the future, how similar problems were solved in other communities. It's been my sincere pleasure and honor, serving you the past four years, getting more deeply acquainted with all of you, and having the opportunity to resolve your problems. I love your thoughtful and constructive input and I pledge to continue being a good listener because that's how we find solutions together. Being on the council's a 40-hour-a-week job. Don't let anyone kid you. If you're committed to doing it well, I've shown that commitment. Thank you, Brisbane, for your confidence in me. I would be deeply honored to have your support again because there's plenty we still need to get done. Thank you, Brisbane Chamber, League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this event, and all of you in Brisbane for your interest in attending tonight. You inspire me every single day.
Thank you. Next is Frank Kern.
Whether you are here in person, out there in TV land, or watching this forum as a prerecorded video, I'd like to offer a special thanks to everyone who carved out time to listen and get informed. Over the listen and get informed. Over the past year, several people approached me and asked me to run for council. And while it was just a planted seed at first, the idea and the passion within me grew. I'm bringing a very varied background to the table, offering a new perspective in guiding the upcoming projects we, we have coming. I'm a bridge builder and a doer. I'm offering a new dynamic that I think will complement the inner workings of city council and benefit the City of Brisbane as a whole. As such, I respectfully ask for your vote in the upcoming election. In closing, across all the commissions, boards, projects that I've participated in and on, the lead takeaway has been that the more participation and the more awareness always equal better results. Here in town, our local government wants and needs as much public input as possible. So on the go-forward, if you are asked your opinion, please provide it. Fill out that survey, show up at the meeting, submit your questions or comments via digital, digitally or online or through social media channels, attend council member office hours, get involved. We need you. Thank you for listening and thank you for your support.
Thank you. And next is Chia Bella David.
A lot of people my age right now are just settling into their dorms right now and I thought I was going to be one of them. For some reason, that path right out of high school didn't seem like the best choice for me. So a lot of you are probably wondering, why is the 18-year-old running for city council? Or whatever may come up. And it's because I truly want to be here. I've always been dedicated to my community and giving back to places that have given back to me so much. And I've really cleared my schedule to be here because I genuinely want to be here for the community and allow people to have clarity moving forward in these big decisions. I've always been interested in politics. I've always been interested in service. And I think this is the perfect opportunity for me to do that and be of service to my community that I adore so much. I've wrote in my candidate statement that I'm a societal engineer and movement coach. And so I'm a movement coach because I teach Pilates and yoga. And societal engineer, you may be wondering, well, what does that? What does that mean? And that's what I landed on, on what I wanted to be coming out of high school. And what does that mean? That defined by myself, that is someone who works to change society. Someone who applies design thinking, someone that's constantly analyzing the systems that affect us and constantly working to make sure that it's more equitable for us all. And so that's what I plan to do here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cliff Lintz.
All right. You know, it's been an honor to serve on the Brisbane City Council. I'm also mindful of the responsibility that you've put in me to make sound decisions on your behalf. Decisions on the council should never be made from high on the mountaintop nor, you know, in fear or speculation or from a position of control. They should be made based on the facts and information with an open mind and clear sight. Council members are at their best when they listen and when they embrace what you have to say. And then we take that information, we analyze it, see if it's feasible, and then we move forward with a, a direction that we can all get behind. Every decision that I make is through the lens of public service. It's the foundation for how I research, how I take public input, how I ask questions, and at times how I, you know, unafraid, you know, challenge the status quo. I feel that the experience that I have on the council will enable us to deal with the, the, the items that we have before us, like building more affordable housing, making sure that we invest in San Bruno Mountain and the habitat that's there, standing up to developers so they don't take advantage of us, continuing to fund the programs and services that keep us safe and happy and healthy, and to ensure that the sustainability of the baylands is at the highest standard. Zero carbon, clean energy, zero wasting of water, and making sure that the site is remediated to the highest standards possible so that it's safe. Our strength is in our ability to come together and make decisions that strive for the greater good. This is what motivates me to run for office and I want to thank everyone for their questions.
Thank you. And finally Karen Cunningham.
Thank you. As someone who's been fortunate enough to live here in Brisbane for 30 years, I will continue to fiercely advocate for our way of life, maintaining the aspects of our community that we know and love while also being flexible as we navigate inevitable change that affects us all. The rich fabric that is woven with our diverse and integrated community speaks volumes. We mentor, encourage our leaders of tomorrow to step in and step up early. The citizens of Brisbane have worked diligently and deliberately for many, many years to be inclusive, to include us all in all of the decisions. This is a trajectory that I will continue. And I'd just like to finish with a couple of highlights of my last four years. I've already said enough about high-speed rail. Took them on and we kind of won. The Bay Shore changes, all those things you're seeing down on Bay Shore right now. Fiber optic is going in and we're widening the, the bike path and the pedestrian path for the safety of everybody. That is just the beginning. Alvarado to San Benito Staircase, finally you say, and the Public Art Committee is going to be doing some artwork on that. That is going to be a wonderful change for the kids going to school. It'll be a safer route to school for them. I was the leader with CAFE. We are an age-friendly certified city now. Public transportation, I lobbied the county to make sure that the 292 continued to go from Hillsdale all the way into San Francisco. It's the only bus we have and they were going to stop it just north of us here. I initiated Youth Volunteer of the Year and we are in the infancy stages of telehealth and telehealth, which I put in place and that will be helping us with the medical, the medical appointments that many of our providers are going to make or virtual. Thank you.
Thank you. You can find additional information about the candidates on the League's Vote 411 website. It's vote411.org. We've got some bookmarks out on the table if you want to grab one. All the candidates have been invited to enter their information and link to their own websites. The League works diligently to obtain candidate responses so that you can hear from them in their own words. So if you see candidate information missing, please have a little patience and check back again. And candidates, please enter your information. If you have, remember to vote by Tuesday, November 5th, and encourage others to do as well. Ballots will be mailed October 7th. October 21st is the last day to register and get a non-provisional ballot. But note, you can register and up to and including the day of the election, but you'll have to submit a provisional ballot. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization and membership is open to all people ages 16 years and up. If you are interested in helping your community with forums such as this or other activities that encourage civic education and involvement, we've got brochures in the table out there. Or for those of you in the ether, you can check our website, L, League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County, L W V N C S M C dot org. And well, it's a hard job to run for office. You put yourself out there and we really appreciate that. So please join me in applauding and thanking the candidates for coming this evening and running for a seat on Brisbane City Council. And that's it for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you.